Okay, welcome. Just a little bit of an informational piece here. We are recording, so all comments will be captured and appreciate everybody being on. Call the meeting to order Skylar Community Schools in its partnership with the parents, students of the community is committed to educate our students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens of the global society. Notice that the meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice the meeting to the public. Notice that this meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. A copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. It moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? I guess we should have asked too. I want to make sure. Brian, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. I can hear you.
Okay, Minor?
I can hear loud and clear.
And Nina?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. So as comments are there, I guess, don't hesitate to speak loudly and we will make sure that we do the best we can with this process. New experience and again, just a reminder, this will be only approved to use the Zoom process through the extent of the, or the duration of the, of the virus component is kind of what I understand. So no comments. Sally, take the roll, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lina?
Yes.
Nisha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Semra?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes. You have some policy. I would move to approve the board resolution to amend graduation policies and practices due to the COVID-19 pandemic school closure. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion.
This was brought up by our school attorney because there are so many policies and guidelines that could affect student performance in school and now that their school closures going on and our seniors are trying to meet graduation requirements. And with this one policy or with this one amendment, it allows the superintendent and the school board president to review each student's performance on a case by case. Obviously, you start with those students who are on track at the end of the third quarter and work from there. So we'll work with the high school administrators and guidance counselors on any progress that we need to work at with individual students to meet graduation requirements. If necessary, we know that we are, we are above the state required limit for graduation requirements by 35. But at the same time, we want to make sure that all students have an opportunity to be able to earn their diploma at Skylar. So rather than just give the superintendent, it is board policy that our attorneys believe that the board president ought to be involved in that process. So that's what this is about is to allow us to be able to look at and make recommendations based on each student's progress. We have some students who are special education students, some students that are ELL students and might need more help than we can give them. And so we're going to have to look at each one of those on a case by case basis. And so we don't get caught by amending one policy and be contradicting another. They recommend that we take this action tonight to allow us to be able to do our jobs to make sure that the closure does not hurt any student's progress to our graduation.
And some of the discussion that I had had with Dr. Hazing too would be that, hey, we don't want to, at least in my opinion, we don't want to just give things away. People need to earn their diplomas just like, like they would be if they were in, in school here and, and class and that, you know, so if there are some that were well on their way and, you know, maybe don't need too much activity to, to finish up their degree, but there are others that maybe need some encouragement and some assistance to make things happen because like I said, we're not just gonna, just give things away. So I think it's, you know, good discussion. And again, we anticipate that the administrators at the high school will definitely play a big part in, in discussion of those students that need that extra help and/or what plans we can put in place to help them get, get to their graduation. You on board with that? Jim, Stephen? Joey, whoever might be part of that, I guess.
I'm on board with that. Yes, I appreciate you guys doing that.
I appreciate you taking time to do that too also.
Yes, I agree.
Quick question. At the end of the third quarter, which was the last quarter where we had students in school, what, what percentage would you say of the seniors were on track at that point to graduate without any hurdles?
I don't know if we have that data for you, Minor, but that's why we'll just start this discussion now because I know that the guidance counselors have been working with our seniors, not only on graduation, but on scholarship applications and college entrance. So we will give a report in May of not necessarily names, but of the actions that needed to be taken to not penalize our kids during this school closure. So prior to us taking any action, you will get to know in the next school board meeting, some of the considerations. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Sally?
Yes.
Nisha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yeah.
Semra?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes. Okay. Move on to negotiations personnel. No.
Insurance.
Insurance. You're right. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposal with EMC Insurance Companies for the 2020-21 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion on that?
Basically, if you look down through the renewal rates, two rates that were affected, one of them was work comp. And we did have some work comp claims that came in. We were real low in our work comp mod last year. I figured it'd come back a little bit. But if you look at that one, the work comp mod came up. And the other one was because we have more building value with the purchase of the nursing home, obviously this goes on. And then with the, with the construction at the high school and now that building comes on. So those are the two places where you can change in any of your insurance rates.
So the valuation of the addition is not included in that at this point, or is that included as well? That's included as well. Okay.
How do they do that if it's not finished?
Because his proposed value of what, what the 12.5 billion is on that building.
I see.
So. And they'll come on shortly now for that because we, we do have builder's risk insurance right now through them, but that goes off and then it, the valuation goes off.
So, so next year, if that value is already there, not next year, but the following year, would, obviously there's going to be a raise typically, you know, in insurance, but would that mean that there shouldn't be a huge jump? Just curious. You know, I know, I know that things can, can go up automatically. I know that. But since it's, I don't know how that works.
Yeah. So like we sold the special ed building, so that value went off.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so that's that juggle. And our insurance is, is replacement insurance. And so there are things that affect your rates. So like if we're looking at as a huge increase in construction costs for replacement insurance, if that's what you have, then you're going to see some jump in replacement insurance. So I'm not going to say that we won't see a jump in every year insurance.
Right. That's what I just didn't know.
I don't know. I didn't see any increase in the value of the, of the old GM, the theater thing. So once that gets up, that valuation might come on. But obviously, we can always contest those values and drive them down, you know, if we want. But, but you want to make sure that you're covered.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Ready?
Um. I guess, like you said, the other thing to drive is, is that mod rate and it went up this year. And again, hopefully, I mean, we'll continue our safety.
Yeah.
Observations and, and meetings and, and the like to help drive those things down, awareness around safety issues. So you continue that process.
We really never had that many claims though this year. That's what's kind of different. But it's a three-year average. So maybe a lower year went off and.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay. All right, Sally, call the roll.
Nisha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yeah.
Semra?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lina?
Yes.
All right. Staff resignations.
I'll move to accept staff resignations and wish Marv Wellen his retirement and thank him for their past service to the district.
I'll second that motion. Yeah. How many years was Marv employed with the school?
Come on, Sally.
More than 20 because he was here when I came.
I believe it was 31 years.
31.
I believe so.
That's awesome. That is awesome. Again, yeah, we wish them all well and, and especially Marv. He put a lot of, a lot of love into his, his work at the school. So appreciate that.
I did have a late resignation and so I did add it. You saw Hannah set the check. We just got that one. So I included her resignation along with the, with the list of the other ones that were in there. So that's what here's the separate because it just came in. So April 15th is continuing contract deadline. And so that date's creeping up. As of April 15th, all staff from now on would have to not only ask to resign, but also if they leave, they have to be released from their contract at that point.
What position was she?
She was fourth grade.
Fourth grade?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Sally, call the roll.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Semra?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Luen?
Lina.
Nisha?
Yes. All right. Do you have your recommendations?
I'll make the motion.
I would move.
Your recommendations as presented.
I will second that.
Is there a second? Awesome. Okay, move Nina's seconded.
He's the first one.
Minor.
Minor.
So this.
Discussion.
Yeah, this is probably kind of hard. I don't know who can all talk about these people, but I'm just curious if you can kind of go down the list and tell us a little bit about some of these teachers, please? Or is that too hard? Probably don't have your things in front of you.
I could, I'll go down. This is Mr. Conley. So most of our new teachers, Nicole Seepel, she is PE. Isabel Zlosny, she is out of Shelby. She was doing some student teaching in East Butler. Alexis Skyler, Lexi Skylar, she, that's interesting with the same last name, but she is coming to us from Carney. Daryl Cubic, she is coming to us from Colorado. She's originally from the Ashland area. Taylor Bennett, her, they got the manager's job at McDonald's in Columbus. So they're moving to the area. Hannah Gerard, she is moving to us. She was student teaching in Lincoln. She's a Peru, Peru, Nebraska girl. And Stephanie Berry is moving to us really from the, kind of the Lincoln Seward area. So they all, I think Stephanie Berry might be the only one that right now at this point would possibly be, not be living here. The rest of them are all looking for housing in the area. So that's a positive.
So if you would, so our majority of those first year or early year teachers or?
The majority of them are there. Daryl is not. Daryl has been teaching for some time. Other than that, they all are, yeah, they're all new teachers.
Okay.
For the middle.
Middle school?
Yep. On the middle school side, we have a few new individuals. Lori Schultz retired from a great career in Fremont and she'll be replacing James Kaiser. James is leaving to go back to his hometown where he'll be married with his high school sweetheart who's also from that area. So they'll be moving there after their wedding. Lori is the wife of Dana Schultz and many of you have probably seen her. She's very active in the community and she currently lives in the community now. Erin Strubing is a recent grad from Wayne State College. She comes very highly qualified. She'll be replacing Rachel Hanson, formerly Rachel Folda, as her husband is in the management program with Menards. So they were moving out of state. Erin, again, comes highly recommended and has some great FCC LA experience for someone so young. She's, she's done a really excellent job and will boost our programs. Um, Nick Arlt, he'll be teaching seventh and eighth grade expanded math. And so just as our numbers have increased for next year at the middle school, he'll be filling this need. Nick joins us. He went to Wayne State College and he's actually from Oakland Craig. He had a very illustrious athletic career as a state champion in track, state champion or, or a high placer in wrestling. And then he's also the, the number four, I believe number four running back and yards rushed in Class C2 in state history. So he understands, we were really going with someone with an elementary endorsement to really be able to help those expanded math kids. And he'll be able to really help us coaching as well.
Sonder Pospichelle?
There, yeah, high school one yet.
Pospichelle's coming from, from Maywood School District. She's been teaching the last six years. Actually, if you ask Mr. Kasek, whom I interviewed her, she has great energy and enthusiastic about coming. She has relatives in Columbus, up by Norfolk. They right away wanted to look for housing. That was the first question she asked after we hired her is when can she start looking for housing here? So that's a good sign of that way. She wants to be here. She's had her son wrestled against Skylar. So she knows our system here and she drives by it all the time because she has relatives living in Omaha. So just an exciting pick.
Thank you.
Lots, yeah. Colin, let's go.
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lina?
Yes.
Nisha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, so what the, what does that leave us as far as positions to fill for the upcoming?
We've got an elementary one that just opened today.
Yeah, elementary has, Hannah was actually filling in for Patricia Fellers that left in middle of the year, but she was moving over to special ed. That's her, her, you know, that's her love and, but she was the best candidate in middle of the year. So we need a sped teacher right now.
High school still needs a librarian. The high school has a librarian that's open. They also have English still open and we just got one recently from Spanish.
Middle school?
Skylar Middle School is staffed at this time. We're good.
Okay, good. All right. Um. Contracts for program directors. Oh my gosh, trying to go too fast.
I'll move to approve the 2020-21 returning teacher contracts as presented.
I'll second. It moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's going to be done before I leave.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry for almost skipping over that. We do appreciate the staff that we do have. They've done a great job and we're happy to keep them. So go ahead, call the roll.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lina?
Yes.
Nisha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Am I? Yes.
All right, now we'll look for a motion on program directors.
I'll move to approve the 2020-21 program directors and school psychologist contracts and salaries as presented.
I'll second. It moved and seconded. Discussion?
I just want to highlight this because I think every one of these groups has been challenged this year with, with either buildings or purchasing buildings having to come in. When I look at Penny juggling and working through all the contracts and things from her office, she's made the move over here. This has been a great move, but in the middle of all that, we're still trying to run a school and keep things rolling. Ryan, Ryan Mundell's done a great job again managing getting this building opened up and having his staff work over here and overseeing this building, along with working with us with the other buildings. And I don't want to leave out the high school administrators and staff who have moved a ton of stuff out of the old buildings to make it possible for the renovations. Jeff Grogi, again, the technology that we've had to put in, now we're being tested with technology out to homes and so on. They've gone above and beyond all of the work that Jeff does to try to make sure that the technology is working hard enough onsite, but when you got new sites coming on and then you're trying to expand out and get people to use different technologies to reach kids. Jamie Ramirez, they're serving somewhere around 10,000 meals a week right now out of a kitchen, trying to keep people safe. So if you get an opportunity and you could sneak in the north doors and watch this, there's three rows of tables sitting out to make sure that we keep our workers safe and we keep the people who are coming up to get their lunches, they're all separated by at least six feet or more and they don't touch each other, you know, just to try to make sure that we're keeping our people safe. That, that's a huge benefit. We'll start, actually, we started last week with our backpack program because we had some food left over from that program. And so they did, because of the, of the long weekend, they pushed out the backpack program last week. We're waiting for our shipments to come in this week and hopefully we can start this Friday with the backpack. Those are weekend meal programs that, that aren't connected to our food services, different program that will have another set of employees running that program on Friday afternoons. But it takes a long time to get that stuff organized throughout the week. So we'll have some of our support staff or some teaching staff or administrators working to try to get that backpack program going. April Becker, as you know, after Mike Goss left, we, we had Mike Goss on contract. We went to the service unit for a school psych. April came as a school psych and she has her administrative degree, been a great resource for us in the special education department. Not only gets on top of all the assessments and the IEPs and the MDTs and all those special education requirements, but has worked with our, with our special ed administrator and with our staff on a variety of different administrative things that she does above and beyond being a school psych. She had an opportunity to go west closer to her hometown. She's actually from Broken Bow, but she had an opportunity to go back closer. And she says she loves Skylar, but, and so I just made mention to her one day, what if we held your contract? Would you consider? And she came back in and actually her daughter accepted a teaching contract with us here next year already. She'll be on staff here. And because she said I wanted a contract with the school district. And so I talked to Rich about it to see, and if you noticed in the, in the contracts, her total contract for the service unit, because the way the service unit has to work their contracts is they have to bill out all of their people and divide them out over. So it actually is a little bit cheaper, not a lot, but a little bit cheaper for us to actually hold the contract than for us to get her through the service unit and we're able to hang on to her. So.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's why you see the site contract back on instead of, so we remove 134,000 from the special ed contract from the service unit and we put her back in. And it's always 93 for, I think she had 185 day contract.
And you have a known quantity of quality that you're used to working with and it's, you know, someone that's familiar with the system that, and again, you know, the work ethic, that's, that's a big step in the right direction.
And every one of the administrators see great value there. So that's, that wasn't a hard recommendation. Like I said, if you go down to the program directors or coordinators, every one of them has gone above and beyond this year. Not that they don't every year, but this year, especially with all the things that we've taken on.
Any comments or questions? I will, I will comment that again, we did meet on these and have that discussion about it. And like I said, you know, we believe, the group of us that, that were there, again, a lot of, lot of extra effort going on by all parties at the school. And, and yeah, is it? again, a lot of, lot of extra effort going on by all parties at the school and, and uh, yeah, is it you know, it's not like this huge bonus or anything else, but it is a little bit more than maybe the norm and uh, but same token, again, we appreciate the effort everybody's put in, so. Believe it's definitely worth the, the, the value is there, so appreciate everybody's efforts. No other comments, call the roll.
Roberts.
Yes.
LaNusa.
Yes.
Nisha.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yeah.
Emma.
Yes.
Robert Chat.
Yes. All right. Uh, we've got the principal reports.
And because they're pretty lengthy, one of the things that we did this month is allow them to go beyond just highlighting a person or a program to say, just highlight some good things that are happening because we're at a remote learning. And so they had the choice of either spotlighting somebody, but the report's fairly long. Maybe we just go down the list and, and start in the elementary and move our way up through the middle school, high school. Positive thing that's happening or something you want to share at this time?
Something near your learning from this whole process, maybe even that, uh, you know, that you wouldn't have thought was something that was positive, but came, came through and showed us there was something good going on with, with result with this uh whole event, I guess, so. So Bill, you want to start us off?
Yeah, at the elementary level, I will say it has gone, you know, at first I was a little unsure how this would all go, but it has really gone, I would say remarkably pretty smooth. The parents have really stepped up. I mean, we distributed out of 800 packets, we only had 50 left. That's remarkable, really. The parents coming to get the work, they're calling. The teachers are going above and beyond as far as, you know, meeting with their teachers. I know Mr. Kovar spotlighted a teacher there, but in, in my board report, I just highlighted Ingrid, she, Meredith Rehan, another counselor, Mr. Kovar and myself were all in quarantine and she really stepped up and she was my main contact at the elementary and was able to, you know, kind of do some running there that we weren't able to do and, and along with Ingrid, but many other people stepped up and I've just been extremely impressed with really the resiliency of the whole community, but our teachers in general have really done a great job. It's, it's really outstanding. I know people don't give Dr. Hazing probably a lot of credit on this, but he has given us a ton of guidance and has really, really helped our teachers and myself through this and I just think things are going extremely smooth for the circumstance. It's, it's pretty remarkable.
Okay.
For the rural.
Darren, anything to add?
I'm not sure Darren's on.
Heather's there though.
Okay.
Heather.
For the rural schools, um, I would say something that's been really cool to see is the teachers who are zooming with their kids and the amount of kids that have uh gotten on with their teachers, just even the communication. But also I think just seeing our love of the work that our teachers are doing to make these packets like really solid, something the kids can have at home to do. I just think out of this bad stuff where everybody's really getting very close together. And on my board report, I just put a couple of the things that the teachers have said that they have positives that have come out of this.
Okay.
Thanks, Heather.
Jesse?
Yeah, um. Am I, yep, you guys can hear me. Um, you know, this has been a pretty difficult situation. One staff member that's really gone above and beyond is kind of getting a little notoriety through this is Mrs. Restinos. She's working through Telemundo, Nebraska, creating some bilingual lessons. She is also one of those teachers going above and beyond doing um, Zoom meetings with their kids. Not all of them can make it on, but those kids do have the packet. I know when we handed out packets, all but 17 of our packets went out with an individual through the first packet handout, and I expect that to go even, probably almost all of them next time. It's really impressive how much our kids and parents are hopping on. Um, I got a long list of teachers who are really doing a fantastic job of going above and beyond the packets, setting up meetings and regular uh, class times with their kids to try to keep them connected. So again, you know, not a great situation, but we got people busting their butts to um, to uh, keep the education going for our kids.
Michelle?
At the high school, like everybody else has said.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Miss Burton, Miss Burton.
I'll go ahead, just stay on.
Um, there's, I have a, a nice long list here of just so many good things. The, the neat thing is, as I read Mr. Zavala's list and as I read my list, there's a lot of different things that we're both noticing and um, and I think that just has really been highlighted by the, the all-in team effort that we're seeing at the middle school. Um, there's, this is a new job for all of us, for all figuring out, you know, what online education looks like, what it, what it means to streamline and create packets, how to get that transition ready for next year. So I, I think that um, there's just a lot of silver linings in what we're doing. If anything, we are going to be a really, really great user of technology at moving into next school year. So I've, I've been really appreciative of all the little things that our staff has done because they are making a huge difference in our community as we assist our parents and how they're um, helping to educate their children.
Thank you.
You want to go now?
Okay, go ahead, Stephen.
I, I'd just like to reiterate what everybody said, the teachers have done a great job, especially with our packets, we're sending out our second round tomorrow, getting assignments for kids so you can continue to work towards graduation. That's a great deal. Our teachers help each other in classrooms. One I'd like to highlight the most, I think for, everybody forgets about is our tech department. They've been on the edge and put on the road, having to do all these Zoom meetings and keeping everything up and running. They've done a great job in keeping us functional as a district with uh, everything they've done. And the lunches, that, that's just phenomenal. Listen to some of these large cities, we're matching them, we're, you know, person for person, so. They've done a great job. That's all I've got.
I'll jump in next, uh, just, you know, I'm not going to read you what I had written there, but uh, I just think this has been a really neat uh, opportunity for our teachers uh, to, especially the ones that have been coming to school every day to collaborate with each other, uh, to really uh, have the time to, to design their lessons and do the things that maybe during a regular busy time, you don't have the time to do, but also their work um, and willingness to help anybody out and just step in whenever we needed anything done has been phenomenal and I just really appreciate it and uh, it, it's been great to see.
Is it my turn?
It can be.
All right. Well, I'm going to jump back to, uh, I think it was 11 years ago when I interviewed with Dan at Newcastle, Nebraska. And I can remember him saying, the face of education has to change. And the things that we were doing up at Newcastle with distance learning and online learning. I think that's really, uh, I look back at that time thinking, man, we were way ahead of the ball there, so way ahead of the curve, so. I appreciate Dan's um, thoughts on how he's leading the, leading the group. He's been very open and honest with everybody. And I think that's a big piece of having great leadership in place. Just a couple of people that I wanted to share, um, our high school paras have been busting their tails. It has been great. Anything that we ask them to do, they have done an amazing job with. You know, and we're finding work for them to do and they just keep pounding it out and getting it done, so I appreciate that. On a personal note, I'd like to uh, highlight Ms. Chavela for working with my fourth grade daughter. She has just done an excellent job of communicating, putting out videos for them, checking in with them, uh, having Zoom meetings with them. She's just such a caring person, so. Uh, that has been just amazing. At the high school level, the staff that I'd like to kind of like just run through quick, Rick Carter and John Sayer have been pushing our students still, they're still holding class every day. They're, the, getting kids who have the internet, who have internet and want to keep moving forward. They're still providing packets for those that don't, but um, they're really pushing some of our higher, higher achieving students and, and holding them accountable and those kids really like to have that, so that's, that's been great. Uh, and just uh, three more that I'd like to share. We were moving a bunch of stuff the last day and we asked for volunteers and we had four people show up and just bust their tails, so. Uh, John Sayer, Jeremy Lavach, Morgan Simrad and Drake Kearns and myself jumped up and got most of the, the stuff off the stage and got that stuff kind of finalized for us, so. We just have a lot of people stepping up and doing what's necessary to really help our school, so. I can't say enough for our staff and, and what they've been doing, so. That's it, thanks.
All right. Gibbons.
I've unmuted myself there. Yeah, we've been doing uh, some curriculum days every Wednesday and that's been going pretty well. Uh, you know, I've never, that's just like everybody else. I've never done that kind of a thing where it's, it's meeting uh, as a group in numerous different places. Uh, and so we, we've really accomplished that. We did have our social studies team work together, work through all the brand new social studies standards and the new uh, American civics law and you know, and, and we just finished up uh, science and, and like I said there, we're going to go ahead with our discovery education textbook for our science curriculum K5 and, and uh, so that's pretty exciting for me and so we'll just keep moving forward with it uh, in, and use this time to work. I, I did want to make sure I pointed out at the bottom there that no testing this year there is, so uh, we do have we, we will not be doing testing this year, but there's different things that were there, been talking about. And uh, one of the things that they're talking about trying to work out with with, with the ACT is to give our third year cohort students, so the kids are being juniors pretty much like a voucher or something to be able to go do the test for free during one of the normal testing dive times, so uh, we'll keep, we'll, we'll keep that in mind and see how that goes.
How about the, the John Baylor uh, test prep stuff? Is that going to, I, I really don't know how that was handled this year with the junior class being, you know, being prepared for the ACT? Is there any uh, uh, plan to how they can keep doing that?
I, I know that I get um, messages from the John Baylor folks, but they're just kind of general messages. Um, Katie Bertrand at the high school level has been in charge of that, so I guess that, that's a great question, so I will make sure I uh, ask that question now and, and get back to her. Um, I don't know if any of your high school guys have talked to her, because I, it's just one that I honestly have not talked to her about it.
It's called, it's called on to college now. And uh, we get, like you said, we get a lot of information sent to us with nothing specific.
Well, why don't we do this? Let's, let's talk to Katie this week, let's get an answer and, and we'll send it out to the board members. How's, how's that? Okay, because Rich and I are going to have to get together at some point with your guidance counselors and look at some senior stuff, but let, let's get an answer on where, where we're at with, with the support for the juniors for the ACT prep, okay? That, that's a great question.
Yeah, thank, yeah, that was a great question, thank you. I had.
Was Charlie on?
I'm here. I just.
Good, are you wearing pink?
No, gray. Um, the first thing I want to say is Dr. Hazing's guidance through all of this has just been priceless. Every time that either the kit, Mishner or governor or someone says special ed, Dr. Hazing looks over at me like, Dard, you got that? I mean, he's always just there for that support. My teachers have been phenomenal. I mean, we've done MDTs and IEPs in ways that I've never really thought of, but no, um, there's been no um, pardon or let going of the rules and the regulations. So we have to carry on just like we would always do our MDTs, IEPs. So, and our teachers have been working together on that and our paras come in and help with translation. It, I've loved this team from the start of the year. And I think I love it even more because they are so hardworking and they work together as a team and I love it.
I would just hit on one topic, you know, the leadership in the buildings. We meet every morning um, with administration and we talk through the issues for that day and uh, and I think the topics that we hit, those administrators go back to their buildings and they carry it out. To be honest, what they've done is nothing short of really remarkable, make sure that our kids are taken care of and we do that with that focus that we, while school buildings are closed, education is not. And we're working hard to make sure that, that we get stuff out to our kids, make, make the right contacts with families, build their relationship at home. And it starts with those building principals and through their teachers and their staff to make sure it happens, so. My, my positive is um, once they get there, we have this discussion in the mornings, they, they carry out everything all day long and so they can say what they want, but it, the actual work's being carried out by them and their building and their staff. So, and if you think that education in a room is difficult at times, trying to do it remotely. And the other group that I, I would say is this office has pulled together and they have support each other, worked through the move, got everything settled. This end of the building where the district offices are is, if, we couldn't ask for a better work setting. And uh, you're in a board room now that, that's your, your room. It's going to serve this district for a long time. So our staff really works hard to make sure. We got the, call up our requisitions in. Sally put in numerous hours to get that thing into shape so that we could kind of hit a budget on it. But thanks and I'm looking forward to working with the administration again this week. We've got four days to to look at what used to happen throughout this week. I try to touch base with the faculty, with all the faculties and now either a Zoom to all staff or an email this week because it's a shortened week and packets are going out. I'll send out an email to all staff and give them an update of the board meeting where they can go to get information. And then looking for that probably a Friday morning Zoom with all staff, update on the week and look into next week, so. It's important, we talk at our level about when, when things would change or when things are out of the ordinary, it's important to have frequent or frequency of interaction. That you meet more often, that you talk more often and these people are zooming with their staff and they're communicating more with their staff than they would necessarily if schools gone on. Knowing that those frequent contacts, while they're sometimes the most convenient for people, they're worth that because we're building those relationships. So thank you to those people, especially those groups that I work directly with for that kind of support. What do board members?
Brian? You awake?
Yeah, I'm off of mute.
Takes a while to mute.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I would say that um, uh, through uh, through difficult times, it can bring out the best of people and I think I've seen a, a lot of that, so. A lot of appreciation to uh, all of you that are listening for, for your leadership. Couldn't be happier with all of the uh, teachers and educators that, that have been working with, with my children. I guess it's uh, uh, it's uh, the difficult times have created opportunity and um, I, I've, I've had opportunity to, to work with my kids on the farm on a daily basis and that's been a blessing. They're, they're staying busy. The, one of my daughters, I asked her if she could help on a particular day and she said. Dad, I got, I got chores to do. I got homework to do. I got basketball to practice. I got volleyball to practice. I got a welding project to do. It's going to be a really busy day. I don't know if I can help you. So they, they've been staying pretty active and I guess it's been an opportunity, even though. They've got more time. It's a, it's an opportunity to manage that time wisely. So. Thanks to everybody that's, that's continuing to do. Do their work in uncertain circumstances. That, that's all I got.
Nina.
Well, you know, like I cannot say much different that what everybody else already mentioned. I'm so proud of all of you. So thank you for make this all possible. My highlight that I was thinking about today, several of you already mentioned it, but I believe that the. Lunch program, it's, it's just amazing. It has been helping in a lot, a lot of families. So I know that it's a very difficult time and we're all stressed, but keep the, the great job team. I, I really appreciate all the things that you guys do. And that's it for me.
Minor.
Pretty much what everybody has been saying, you know, I'm, I'm very. Proud of the way that the school has come together and, and made sure that our kids continue receiving education. On my personal level, you know, I am very fortunate that I have a senior at home. Well, fortunate for me, not, not as much for her. She's missing a bit of. Time that she was looking forward to. But she wants to, or, or she's going to school next year for early childhood education. I have two young ones at home, so she's been getting a lot of practice over the last few weeks. And it's also given my wife and I an opportunity to do some work with them that. You know, it's stuff that we take for granted from our teachers. And I think this time has made us appreciate all the work that teachers do with our kids on a day, day by day basis.
Charles.
Welcome home.
Thank you. Well, one of the things I'd like to say is on a positive note is. May not be positive that Marv is leaving, but it's been a very positive. Years that he's been here. He's done great things for our, for our grounds and I hope. They enjoy their travels in Colorado because I think we have been in a couple of the same places that they enjoy. So. Have a, have a great retirement, Marv, and. Take your wife out to Colorado and enjoy. Like to say, when I walked into this building, the first time I thought, wow. I hope he has a good. Thought of what he's going to do. And this has been amazing when I come back to see how they have moved into this building. And it doesn't even seem like the same building and it looks like it's very, very professional and very, very. Very neat. And. I want to thank all the, all the people, all the teachers, all the administration. For batting together and doing. The extraordinary, and I know they're doing very much extraordinary. And also want you to think about me. We've been in quarantine when we came back from Colorado and imagine how being in the same house with your wife for that long. It's a wonder that, it's a wonder that everything is still intact.
Poor Glenetta.
Keep up the good work, everybody. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I was really pleasantly surprised by something that I came across today on the, on the internet. We've had a former Skylar graduate that's now in the, in the army. And I think she might've graduated with, with my son William. And so she would be out. Four years right now. Her name is Karen Rodriguez. And she, amazing job on a, on a song. That was videotaped and, and YouTube'd with the US Army. And it was, I was, I was so proud of her and I mean, I, I remember her, but I didn't, I didn't know her very well. But I looked at her and I didn't, I didn't know who it was. And then I was like, wow, I, I think I know her. And, and then, you know, at the end of it, it says her name. And I think that that's super cool that she's sharing her gifts. That way and has the opportunities to do what, what she's doing in the Army in music. So anyway, so shout out to her and, and. You know, it was just really cool. So.
I, I remember she, she did the, she did the national anthem for our staff meeting one morning.
Yeah, yeah. You should hear her now because you would not believe what, what four years, you know, like does to a voice when you're using it all the time. And, and so anyway, so if anybody wants to watch that when we're done, I, I have it on my phone because it's pretty cool.
Sally. I will make you go last. I won't make you.
I also saw that today. It was really good. I think we all are glad that we're here and we're settled in the building. And we're learning how to do Zoom meetings, although sometimes we come out here and sit while he's doing it. So he doesn't. Sitting out here talking to just the screen. And we've, we've gotten to help with some bulk mailings. That when Dr. Hazing had something, it goes out to the entire district of 1,103. I think was the total that we did a couple of times. The tech staff. Special ed people, Dave, anybody that was free came down and we got it out in about four hours. There's a lot of envelopes and, and anyway, and then we had high school parents help with the first one. Cause that one was, the last one was a rush job. Like we gotta get it done now. So. So it's been, it's been nice to work down here and. I'm building new relationships with some other people that we didn't work real closely with before, since we're all in the same building. My one good thing about Easter was I made a big batch of kolaches and took them up to the. Villa in West Point where my mom resides. I'm not sure if they appreciate, those Germans up there appreciate kolaches, but it's like. It, you know, you can make a lot of them. They go a long way and we, they did not let us in the building. Cause, but they knew I was coming, but they opened her window that far and we could stand and yell at her through the window. And she was surprised to see us and just kind of glad. We've been doing a little FaceTiming, but. It's been a month since we'd seen her and it's probably going to be another month before.
Yeah.
And it was interesting to see how many family members were on, on the sidewalks, finding their loved ones windows. Since it was a nice Saturday and being able to communicate. So it made for a nice Easter.
That's good. Well, I guess I'll talk a little bit about Skylar pride. And I'm just proud of all of our staff and administration. Just the, the extra effort that needs to go into this difficult times, you see leaders arise. And I think we've seen that across all of our buildings. So that would be one thing I'd want to talk about. And, you know, we just like you said, put your best foot forward. There's not going to be any perfect plan. We learn as we're going and hopefully, you know, this situation never occurs again. However, we're not out of it yet. And, you know, we may need to be doing some things differently, you know, and it may change forever. You know, we don't know that. But again, having the opportunity to do some things. You know, more online, Zoom meetings, et cetera. And that, that may be part of our regular day from, from this day forward. So. That being the case, that's what our family did on Easter Sunday. We zoomed across to all of our family members and, and had some discussions and it was, it was kind of cool. So. But again, appreciate everybody's efforts and, and the things that are, that, that we have to deal with here in these challenging times. So.
Yes, it did.
He did.
Oh, he did?
She wasn't listening. Is that normal? Does she?
You guys never heard.
Okay. So anything you want to touch through on your reports or Dr. Hazing?
I, I already went through all of that. I did fax up some parent letters that I, the later ones. So the rest of them are all up on the internet. You can see them.
Yeah. And I think that's probably something to comment on too, and the fact that. You know, we are trying to be transparent in what we're doing and how we're approaching things. So. You know, we may not please everybody. That's gets a given, but. Bottom line, I think there's a lot of good things that we are doing and appreciate those that are putting in those efforts to make it better. So.
Oh, I should say this because when I write a letter to parents, I have family people think I'm Spanish. Dave Gibbons does the extra work. I go to Google Translate, but then he goes in and fixes it for me. So. Thank him for his work. Cause sometimes those, when I get information at three o'clock in the afternoon and I need to get it out to parents right away. It's a pretty rushed job after once that letter goes together to try to get Sally and her crew to get them all mailed. Dave to get that translated to, we get it, should get it run off and. While Google does a pretty good job, if, if you write well, Google does a great job, but sometimes Dave has a lot of work to do.
All right. Any committee reports?
We did have a foundation meeting, Brian. You wanted to hit a couple of highlights from that meeting?
Sure. I guess looking back at my notes, I guess. You know, like, like everything, things are kind of up in the air and on, on hold. I guess the, the more pressing thing would be. The distinguished. Distinguished alumni, you know, we usually recognize those individuals during the commencement. And so we're kind of put on, on hold for that and, and whatever comes of. Whatever's decided with commencement, we're, we're kind of, like you said, on, on hold to see what, what we're able to do or with commencement and with distinguished alumni. We're still planning on recognizing. Staff, you know, our staff recognition. So. I guess we, Shelley Fries will be getting out. Emails for requesting those, those nominations and, and we encourage. Everybody to put nominations in for recognizing the staff and that. This might be a time where, you know, sometimes that award gets to be a. Sometimes it gets to be a lifetime achievement that this might be a, an opportunity to really highlight people that are stepping. Up and going above and beyond in this particular difficult time. That's what I would have.
Okay.
Virginia, Dan, anything to add?
No, I just, as, as far as the three coming meeting events, and I put it in the parent letter that they're going to get tomorrow. Prom, awards night and graduation. We'll be working with the high school administrators. Obviously the, the governor has, has a role in, in setting dates so we can. Start hosting some kinds of things, but looking at what are some ways that are possible for us to be able to not lose those events totally for our kids. Right now they're not canceled. They're all postponed and it might be July, it might be August, depends on when we can have something. But I think we have to look at some options on how we can do some things. Prom might not look like prom. It might be something. Okay. But we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that, that these kids don't get cheated out of anything that we can help us. Get organized. So. We'll be working with high school administrators just to get ideas on those three final events. The other thing is there is a note or there's a letter from Barbara Gowan in your correspondence. And so because she did take early retirement, she did also write a, a letter and we put it in correspondence because you know, we sign it twice. So you'll see that letter in correspondence. One of the other things is expect this month, some of the things that we need to do is meet with some of the board committees. Okay? And we do have a time set up for. Our construction meeting, which is buildings and grounds to look at. It's a week from this Thursday at nine o'clock in the morning. To look at some finishes and some final drawings for the, for the old gym theater event center. And then also Virginia. Asked about going and seeing some sound systems in other schools. And so Tim Rip, who is with Clark Anderson is trying to line that up with school closures. It's just a little more difficult for us to be able to get in, but we need to get that done. I'm going to meet with the finance committee, building and grounds. Obviously the, the Americanism, this is where we're starting to look at a curriculum for next year. So. During this month, we'll start meeting, looking at meeting times for, for board subcommittees or board committees to meet. Even if you have to meet over Zoom and. But we'll, I'll work with, with Rich on trying to get some time set this month that was some committee meetings. Expect over the next couple of months anyway, that, that those committees will start meeting now. We're hoping to meet now, but with everything else we've had, it's just gotten things pushed off. So.
Dan, that, that building and ground committee Thursday, April 23rd at nine o'clock? Not this Thursday, next Thursday?
It's not this week. It's next week. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And you can, you can, you can tend by a Zoom or you can come to the actual meeting and that's always. It's at the old superintendent's office. It's kind of set up as a conference room now. But you can attend by Zoom or you can meet in person, whatever works.
Okay.
So we'll let you know more about it as we get closer to that date.
Okay.
Zach is sitting out there as a news reporter. Did you want to say anything?
Um. I don't think so at the moment. Um, I was really only here to. Listen to what you guys have to say about the graduation. The graduation requirements.
Yep. We will still have them. All right. I was gonna say I, we would, what toured the construction site a probably week and a half ago. Covering is over the gym and over the rest of the, all the, it's all dried in now. Is that correct? Is it? So that's some good things happening there. And like I said. Mucked out and, and.
Yeah, it looks good in there.
Yeah. So that's a.
So they get that poured and then weather isn't going to hurt us anymore from that point.
So all looking good. So if nobody else has anything exciting new to bring to the board, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of this, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Looks like we got her done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phone back on. So I wake up in the morning.